He was here last time.
Yeah, he was.
Population 23,000, I read today, but that was. Well, good evening, everyone. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yama zoning Board of Appeals this August 10, 2023. We have four matters on our agenda this evening, and we're going to start right with petition number 5041. Robert and Julie Bushway, if you could just come up to the table. I'm just going to read into the record a statement here. So my name is Steve DeYoung, Chairman of the Yama Zoning Board of Appeals, and we will convene the August 10 meeting right now. As required by General Law Chapter 30A, Sections 18 through 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, known as "an act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency and as extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023," the public are able to attend this meeting either in person or via the alternative public access. Members of the public may watch the meeting on channel, live, actually, on Channel 18, or watch and/or participate via the hosted Zoom meeting. The meeting notice for this evening's meeting provides the necessary instructions for how to join the meeting via Zoom. Please note that audio, video, and screen sharing functions will be dismissed, disabled, rather, for all attendees, and you may request to participate by using the raise hand function. We will now take a roll call to determine that we have the necessary quorum, and I see Mr. Mantoni, you here?
Here.
Mr. Igo's here?
Here.
Mr. Frapery's here?
Here.
Mr. Martin's here?
Here.
I'm here, so this constitutes the regular board, and I just want to point out to my left is our new member, and she comes in as an alternate, so thus you're blessed tonight to have six of us. Only five will vote, okay? Why don't you go right ahead and tell us, oh, I'll read it in, I'm sorry, Robert and Julie Bushway, Bushway, I'm sorry, 67 Taft Road in West Yama, Mass. That property is located in an R40 zoning district. This evening our applicant speaks a special permit pursuant to 104.3.2, subparagraph 2, and/or a variance pursuant to Sections 203.5 of our zoning bylaws, for rear setback relief to replace an existing deck and add a 12-by-16 deck extension. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Why don't you tell us who you are?
Hi. Good evening, and thank you for your time. My name is Bob Bushway from 60, we live at 67 Taft Road. I'm here with my wife Julie. We're here tonight seeking relief for our 10-by-12 deck replacement in an added 12-by-16 AZEC ground-level open patio deck that was installed last July by James Lally of Decked Out because the old wooden deck was very rotted and unsafe to walk on. It was our belief that the deck had been permitted, which unfortunately it was not. As requested by the building department, a certified plot plan was obtained in May of this year that shows the lot being 100 feet by 95 feet, or 9,500 square feet. Current zoning in this area is R40, or 40,000 square feet, so our lot is pre-existing non-conforming. Thus, the dwelling itself does not meet the current zoning requirements. If our lot conformed to the current zoning of 40,000 square feet, or more than four times the current size, the setback requirements would make perfect sense. Also, even with our existing lot size, the existing building coverage still meets the 25% requirement as set forth in the current zoning. We have no neighbors in the rear of our lot as we back up to 196 acres of town-owned land, which includes Plash's Pond. Lastly, we have heard support from our neighbors with no one voicing objections to this matter. It is for these reasons that we seek relief. We thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Well, thank you very much for being so succinct. We like that because we all want to get home. So I think there's probably going to be a few questions the board might have, and we'll start that off, if I could please, with Ms. Murphy. Any questions of our petition? And how about you, Mr. Mantoni?
Just a couple, just for clarification. So this is currently up, right? It's built?
Yes, it is.
The, beyond the deck is that patio, that's the one that encroaches in the, right?
Yes, yes.
The deck itself in one of these photos is 20, over 20 feet from the lot.
Right.
So now, what is this patio made of?
It's the AZEC, like a Trex deck?
Yeah.
That most people are putting in now.
AZEC, okay.
Yeah.
This is the brand name of the mansion?
Yeah, 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 no. And the dimensions on that are, or what?
12 by 16.
12 by 16, and so that would put you eight and a half feet now, right, from the lot line?
Correct.
Okay. All right, just, just so I understood what's going on. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Igo.
No questions. Thank you.
Mr. Frapery.
Just wanted to, the old deck, I see how it was off the back of the sunroom, or whatever that is right now, and the other one's to the side of it. How far back did it go, and how close was it to the property line before you had it replaced?
Not exactly sure of the dimensions at that point. We bought the property in 2020. Rented it out for two years, and so when the tenants moved out last summer, that's when the old deck was replaced. So we actually didn't move into the property until last September after we had work done to the house and the new deck was put on.
Because the new deck is to the side now, where the old deck was further over.
Well, the new deck-
Can I just jump in?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the existing deck was rotted.
I understand.
We replaced in the exact same footprint, in the exact same dimensions. The only part that's new is the pad that sits on the ground.
And that goes off the back towards the rail lot line.
Okay, yeah, I'm looking at a picture, the first picture that you had provided.
Yes, that's the old-
Is that the side of the, side of the house, and not the back?
Right, yeah, that's the, well, it's off the, we have a, kind of a three-season room.
Exactly, yeah.
So it sets to the left of that and back a little bit, and what the lower ground-level additional deck pushes off towards the back of the lot.
All right, so this one looks like it's probably about 14 feet further back, further than the old, than the old one was.
Yeah.
It's 12 and 16, but-
I see a line here that says the old deck, and it looks like a couple extra feet beyond the 12.
Okay, sorry.
So you had 14, so it was over 20 feet before, but now it's going to be closer to 8, is what it comes down to.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Martin?
I mean, it looks very nice, and I, a couple questions in terms of, was it the deck man that built the deck?
Yes.
Okay. And he didn't think to get permits?
It was called, no, I'm sorry. This was, it was called Decked, Decked Out.
Is his company name? Jim Lally is the owner of Decked Out.
And he didn't think or, or say anything about permits? Nobody thought that they needed to get a permit for this?
We requested that he pull the permit. We were actually still living in Walpole at the time, so it was difficult to manage the project. We had hired a general contractor to do the interior work on the house, pav construction, and he pulled the permits, that he required permits, and we wrongly assumed that this gentleman did the same thing. He did not.
Yeah.
I have more of a concern, because it's town land in back, you're not really encroaching on anybody else's property, which is one reason nobody else is here, probably, but I do have a, a problem with what appears to be the encroachment of the chain link fence now, which is well onto the town property, as shown on the, as shown on the plan. So it looks, you know, it looks like you've got a lot more room there than you actually do have with the new deck. You're really only eight and a half feet to the, to the lot line, as you know, and, you know, I have, I have some issues with that encroachment. I know the town has been trying to correct a lot of these encroachments. Has anybody talked to you about that?
No, and if I could just point out, and not, not that this is an excuse, but the, that chain link fence was there when we bought the property in 2020, and nobody, when the property was conveyed to us, that was not-
So the previous guy did that?
Evidently, somebody did.
I know how that runs.
It wasn't us.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, not to muddy the waters, but we are 20 feet from the, from that chain link fence in the back to the, to the, to the ground-level new additional deck that was put in, so maybe that's why the deck people that-
Been measuring from the fence.
Exactly, yeah, so.
I can see that happening, yeah. All right, you know, I mean, I guess I'd still say I have some problems with that encroachment, and I think that that maybe should be corrected. I know we've had that done in other cases in the, in the past, where, you know, like a shed's over the lot line, it has to be moved back onto the property, that type of thing, and I, I don't mind so much giving the relief, but I, I don't like to see these encroachments because essentially, you know, it, it allows for eminent domain after a period of time, and even though you didn't do it, still, unfortunately, somebody should have come up with that, you know, that you, you had an issue there, and whoever did your original plot plan when you bought the property, or whatever the case may be, somebody screwed up along the way, and-
Not, not to call out anybody else, but it's not uncommon that folks on our side of the street, if you were to, you know-
They've encroached, yeah.
Yeah, some fences will go even beyond my, my fence, but I'm, you know, I'm not saying it's the right thing to do, but it's certainly-
It's pre-existing.
I, I know what you're saying, and I'm sure if I went and tried to walk that lot line, I'd have all sorts of troubles.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but I, I appreciate the question.
Yeah. All right, that's all I have for questions or comments.
Enlighten me. You've got 20 feet that separates you from a chain link fence to the rear?
Yes.
You put that chain link fence in?
I do not know. It must have been-
Yeah, when you bought it?
Yes.
Well, much like Mr. Martin, I'm not in the business of wanting to see people encroach on town land, you know? That's the town's land, not, not your land, so, you know, I, I think we ought to talk, think, talk about moving the fence into where it belongs, but that's for the rest of the board to consider. The deck is spectacular. It's gorgeous. You did a wonderful job. Your deck man should be shot, your contractor that did it, because they, they think they can just do these things and not worry about it. So that's not our anger with you. It's our anger with seeing too many of these before us because of somebody else's ineptitude or the decision that they don't need to comply.
Right.
I don't know, eight feet to 20 is a whole bunch of distance in my mind. I don't care what they're doing back there on the town. It's the town's land. So I, I guess we can deal with that in a moment, but does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone, let us hear what you have to say. Seeing none, does anybody in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone, let us hear what you have to say. And seeing none, we now close it to the public's input into the petition, open it up to board discussion, deliberation, and why don't we start with you, Mr. Martin?
You know, I, I would agree. The deck looks fine. There's no direct neighbors in back. I, I'm sure there's all sorts of encroachment, encroachments going on, but I, you know, I think we have to, may need to be a little tougher on that in terms of where that lot line should be is where that lot line should be, but I can be potentially convinced otherwise, depending on what the board feels as a majority.
Okay, Mr. Frapery?
No, I think that the deck is very nice. I mean, it, it does encroach, but I think I have some of the similar concerns of deck. If we, if we don't take advantage of trying to make sure that this works now, I'm not sure when, when this will be resolved.
Mr. Igo?
I agree with everyone else who's said here. It would certainly be a financial hardship to ask the petitioner to take that deck down, and it appears that it was by no fault of their own and by the contractors that were hired. In terms of the fence, I mean, I suppose we could discuss having them remove it, but perhaps a happy medium might mention in the decision that the fence is there illegally and that we're certainly not putting our stamp of approval on it, and they're on notice that it's there illegally, and at some point the town may require them to move it. I don't know how the others would feel about that condition in there.
Yeah.
Kind of see, I mean, if anything, it keeps the, the animals out of the backyard, probably, at night.
And our dog in our yard.
You got a dog in the yard, okay.
It's one of the attractions why we bought the house, because it had a fenced yard.
I mean, I, I think the only thing that would change is it would just be open to the back if we told them to remove it. I, they're allowed to maintain town property. They're just not allowed to control it. I suppose a fence would be control. The lawn certainly is just maintenance, but again, if there's, there's no immediate harm to it, the town doesn't need the property, and it's not affecting any of the neighbors or anybody else in the neighborhood or surrounding zoning district, might suggest that we just put a little proviso in the decision that just says that it's there illegally, and at some point the town may require them to remove it.
Mr.?
Sorry. I, may I speak or not?
You go ahead.
I just had a question. You know, I understand all that. I certainly do.
You may want to be careful that you don't snatch victory-
Victory from the jaws of death, defeat.
Defeat from victory, yeah. You got to, I think we've got things going in the right direction, so why don't you hold off?
Okay.
More than welcome your back, if you want to say something. Mr. Mantoni?
Yeah, I'd agree with the board here on, on these issues. How many feet is that chain link fence encroaching on the town land? Do you know? I mean, it doesn't say, I guess I could do the-
I'd say about 12 feet, about 12 feet.
Yeah, because the position of their deck is eight feet off the back. The fence is 20 feet.
Yeah, I don't have anything more to add.
Ms. Murphy?
I, I can't, I haven't, I agree with Sean's comments.
Okay. You know, these things happen, and if it were, like we see some of them, which is just an intentional land grab, effort to get a land grab, you know, we, we get a little frustrated with that sort of thing. But I have a, a memory of us on many occasions acting as Mr. Igo has suggested, which is to know that that is not your land where that fence is, and the 12 feet that separates it from your land, and you, you utilize it at your own risk with the town being able to come in and enforce it. We're not really that enforcement group, anyway, and so if everybody else is willing to accept that sort of a proviso, I'm happy to incorporate it.
I'm comfortable with that, too.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the variance, because this is a variance, as requested. And it's not a condition, but it would just be a statement or some type of memorandum in the decision that there is presently a fence that encroaches on town property, and that the petitioners are aware, what is it, encroaches on town property.
Less than 20, it wasn't before.
And at some point, there may be an enforcement action, but in no way-
True.
-grant any type of property rights in the future to them.
Yeah, I think I can draft something like that into the decision. So the motion has been made with, with a suggestion of a notation within the decision addressing this issue of the encroachment on town property. Does anybody-
I'll second it.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Frapery. Thank you very much. And does the board, have they met the criteria of a, of a variance, Mr. Igo?
Well, the criteria, I think the second element of the criteria, that being a hardship, is owing not to the shape, soil conditions, or topography as required for a variance, but the fact that they relied on professionals to do a professional job and pull permits, and they didn't do so, and as a result, these people are an innocent victim. And I think for those reasons that they could meet the criteria for a variance, because I think that hardship certainly is paramount in our considerations, and so.
It wasn't intentional on their part.
It was not.
Right? Well, we've had discussion. Does the board care to have any more discussion before moving along to a vote? Hearing none. Mr. Martin, on the motion so seconded?
Aye.
Mr. Frapery?
Aye.
Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
And I am as well, so that's unanimous decision. It will be drafted, it will be filed with the town clerk's office. You must then take that, after waiting 20 days for when maybe one of your neighbors is going to appeal, but I know it, I know it, and bring it down to the registry of deeds in Bonstall, record it there, and bring proof that you've recorded it there back to our office administrator to my right. Wonderful, Ms. Fallon.
Do we have the plot plan registered, recorded as well?
No.
No, just the decision.
Mr. Chair, there's also the special permit.
I couldn't hear you.
There's also a special permit?
Special permit. Oh, yeah, we take away the, you got the special permit.
Okay, so you asked for relief in the alternative, and we gave you relief based upon the highest criteria, a variance. Having said that to you, it's a, it's, the relief you have gotten is, would be duplicative of the, of the special permit. So you can't have both for the same relief. Historically, what we do with everybody is we then say, we're looking forward to your request that says you, you want that withdrawn without prejudice. You just asked that, right? Okay, very good. So on that motion, is somebody prepared to make a motion on that?
So moved.
Who is that?
Jay, second.
And that withdrawal would be without prejudice, right?
Correct.
Unless the board needs to have some discussion, which I don't hear, all those in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
That carries on a unanimous voice vote. Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming and doing the right thing. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Where'd you move down from, by the way?
Walpole. Good.
You made a good choice.
I think so. We love it here.
Happy to have you. Good to see you.
Quick question. Is there any possibility of purchasing some town-owned land?
No.
That we would get that stripped?
I, well, you, it is a possibility to do anything in this world, but I'm going to tell you that what you have to go through in order to purchase-
Wouldn't be easy.
-town-owned land is something you do not want to do, because you got to get the Massachusetts Legislature just to hang off on it.
And you don't have to pay taxes on the land that you're borrowing right now.
You want to increase your tax obligations?
Feel free.
Before I leave, if I can indulge everybody's time for just one minute, I need to understand. So we're walking out of here with the knowledge that the fence is illegal and living day-to-day with somebody could come and tell us to take it down?
They could. You're trespassing on town property, but-
Tell you to remove the, remove the debt.
Well, and, and just because of so many other neighbors, would it then be fair so that the other neighbors would have to take theirs down, too?
Others could have the same problem, yes. Yeah.
Just as long as it's, it's, you know, equitable for everybody.
I, I think you can probably sleep well tonight, knowing that no one's going to bother you about that. I don't, unless the town needs the property for something, you probably won't hear very much.
We'll see you. Thank you very much, yeah. Petition 45, 5042, that of Laura Mendoza, 44 Howes Road, South Yama, Mass. That property is in a zoning district R25. Our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to bylaw Section 104.3.2, subparagraph 2, and/or a variance under bylaw Section 203.5, for front setback relief to allow a constructed screen porch to remain. Hello?
Hi.
Why don't you tell us all about your, your request?
I am requesting to keep my porch. I have a porch that was put in. It was supposed to be a specific size that was measured and whatnot, and it is six inches too big on the right side, so I don't know what we go from there. So I came here because it was denied, so I just wanted to see if I can approve it, keep my porch.
On the right side or the left side?
The right side, closer to the door. The, oh, you have a picture.
Looking at it from the street on the left side, probably.
We'll be looking from the street. It's on the left side.
I could never figure out why they, they put that little roadway that came right around the back there. I guess they did it so they could get a lot right back there, but-
Yep.
That's the funniest little street that curls around right there.
There was a-
It's a headache to you.
In the back that went to that road.
Yeah, yeah.
I think the person who lived there in the 60s might have used it.
Yeah, but non-conforming.
Think he liked the neighbor.
Setback there, actually.
Okay, so let's keep some order to these wonderful proceedings, so we all can go home, and we're going to now ask Mr. Igo, do you have any other questions of our petition?
No, none, thank you.
Mr. Mantoni?
No questions.
Frapery?
No questions.
And Mr. Martin?
Oh, only looking for six inches due to a calculation mistake, so this is something we see a fair amount of, and it's usually what we like to call a rubber stamp.
Thank goodness. I wasn't sure what we were going to do with the porch.
Spins around the back. That's it right there.
Because Howes Road goes-
Yeah, it's, it's the funniest little thing.
I thought, so I, I remembered something down on Howes Road, same problems, yeah.
It's a quiet neighborhood.
Well, you know, it's a public road, and that's, I'd have more sympathy for everybody if it were a private road, but in any event, you didn't have that built, did you?
I built it. No, I didn't build it.
No, you bought it while it was there?
Yeah. No, I had it built.
Oh, you did?
I, I pulled a permit to have it built, and I had the land surveyor come and do the little square, and that was expensive, and then he told me it was going to be that size, and then they came in, they built, they left, and then I came back, paid again to measure again, and it was off by six inches, and I said, okay. She said, let me know how that works out. I don't know how this works.
And what did he tell you to do? Take a sawzall and cut it with six inches?
I was like, what do you want me to do? The porch is already there. I mean, it's got lights inside. I don't know.
You know, and my, my heart goes out to people that suffer this kind of consequence at the hands of their, their builder. The builder, you hire a building, expect that he or she will provide you with what you need, that is, a permit, and build it in the right, in the place where it's permitted. I'm sorry that that didn't happen to you here. I don't think it's a big travesty, a tragedy, and I'm sure we'll give you the right relief you're looking for, okay? Does anyone in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition? If so, please come to the microphone, let us hear what you have to say. Seeing none. Anyone in our audience care to speak in opposition to this petition? If so, come to the microphone and let us hear what you have to say. And seeing none, we now close it to the public input on the petition. We open it up to board discussion, deliberation. Who am I going to pick on? Jay, let's pick on you first.
I have no problems. I'm just curious, is it, is this one a variance or a special?
No, this is a special permit, because there was a-
It's on the second road.
There was also a pre-existing encroachment on that setback, because that never made 30. If she's only talking six inches, she never made her 30 feet anyway.
The corner, the thing that comes around the corner.
Yeah, so this isn't a brand-new non-conformity. There was an existing one there, so it's an alteration or extension, so you-
Got the special permit. But I'm, I'm good with it. I have no problems. I think it's a-
Mr. Martin?
No problem at all.
And how about you, Ms. Murphy?
No problem with it at all. Deminimus, to me.
I love that word, de minimis. It's one of my favorite, my favorite two words, but
You like that word on the board.
We, we lawyers love to put that into legal-
I've never been to one of these. This is really interesting.
Minimus, and someday somebody's going to say, so what does de minimis mean, Mr.? You know, you say, well, the way I'm feeling right now. Mr. Mr. Mantoni?
Yeah.
You okay with it?
Yeah, I'm all right.
And Mr. Igo?
Yes, I'm fine with it. It appears that it's, if I can coin a phrase, de minimis.
Well, you know, I, I think that it creates no undue hazard nuisance nor congestion.
Okay.
I got to say these words. You don't have to agree with them. I cannot see any undue hazard or nuisance or congestion that's created by the grant of the special permit if allowed, and nor will it change the character of the existing neighborhood or future neighborhood of town. What is, all these words have to be said, okay?
Okay.
And I think that there are two forms of relief sought, so as you heard me speak to the prior petition, if we, we're going to pursue, proceed on a special permit-
Okay.
With the understanding fully that you're going to be asking us to withdraw the variance, that withdrawal to be without prejudice.
Okay.
Okay? You agree all with that?
Yes.
Anybody prepared to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve petition 5042 for a special permit as, as requested.
Second?
Second.
Does the board care to have any discussion before moving along, hearing on, uh, Mr., Ms. Murphy?
Um, aye, agree with.
Yeah, that works, yep. Mr. Mantonio.
Aye.
Ms. Igo.
Aye.
Mr. Frapery.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, it carries unanimously. Uh, the decision will be drafted, it will be filed with the town clerk's office. Once that decision has been on file there for 20 days and no one having appealed, you then are going to be granted that special permit, which you need to bring to the registry of deeds.
Okay.
And record it.
Okay, and that's in Barnstable?
Yeah, well, you know what? Ms. Fallon, to my right, is going to definitely give you directions and how to do and.
Okay, what to do next.
Your GPS always helps, so.
Yes.
So we have a, uh, we have a, uh, variance. Who's prepared to move to allow that to be withdrawn without prejudice?
So moved.
Who's the second?
Second.
All right. I'm camping all summer with two kids in diapers, so take your time. This is nice.
All right, so we can do this on a voice vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. It carries unanimously on a voice vote, and the, the variance is thus withdrawn, but the special permit is granted. Good to see you, have a nice night.
Thank you. So I get to keep my porch. It's good.
Say?
I get to keep my porch. That's great. I wasn't sure what the outcome was, it wasn't going to happen, I'm like, what am I going to do?
If we had said no, I would just love to have seen how you corrected.
I don't know. I would just add, maybe they could shave it with like a sandpaper, just till it's like six.
Hammer off six inches, that's all.
It says the post is pretty big if you went down.
Good talking with you, thank you.
Do I need anything else, or you're going to stop?
Okay, thank you. All right, petition 5043, that of Christopher and Regina Diaz, I'm hoping I say that name right? Did I say that right?
Not bad.
Okay, well, correct me because I'm interested.
We've had better butchers.
Oh, how do you say that, though?
Ds.
Ds, okay. It's like D Young, and they all want to call me D Young. So I, I share that problem with you. We're talking about property located at 3 Norma Avenue in South Yamath, Massachusetts, that property being in an R-40 zoning district. And either applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 104 point 3 point 2, subparagraph 2, and/or a variance under 203.5 of our bylaws for front setback relief to construct entryway in the front setback of, on a pre-existing nonconforming structure. Did you save up all of these front yard setback cases for us to consider?
Just lucky, I guess.
Oh, I feel very lucky, yeah. All right, so why don't you go ahead and tell us all about your petition, sir?
We've got a nonconforming lot, as it's stated. I think we're, I, I'd have to look at the information that I gave to you guys, but I think we're looking for.
Six inches.
Six inches. So.
Six incher.
It's a popular measurement tonight, isn't it?
Well, it's been popular for years. But anyways, the reason why I'd like to, to, to move the entryway from its existing location is where the two roofs come together. You gotta, this way and this way.
Much action.
There's no way that I can put a, plus it's a short door, it's a typical Cape Cod short door. So with that being said, I've got to replace the front window, and I'd like to take and just center it on the front of the house, and I think it, it would actually give it street appeal versus what you have there now, which is a handicap rat ramp and a, kind of a pretty unappealing front door, to say the least. As far as I'm, as far as I know, I don't think I've had any of the neighbors say anything negative to what we've done there so far. But it would just, uh, it would enhance the, the street appeal.
Thank you very much. Presented very well and succinctly, we like that. So, Mr. Mantonio, any questions about petition?
No, no questions.
Ms. Murphy.
No questions.
Mr. Igo.
Uh, no questions.
Mr. Martin.
No questions, I think it makes it look better, and it's a diminutive.
Mr. Frapery.
Just one, um, are you removing the ramp? I know the ramp that's there now, is that coming out?
Well, if you'd like me to leave it, I'll leave it, but I, I want it gone.
Not really.
When we, when we bought the place, Wilcox, actually, his mother lived there, and honestly, I left it in because it was a lot easier moving the appliances and the ramp rather than looking, I could put them on a dolly. And to take it off without doing something in the front of the house would just.
Given that you get relief and you make this move, it's going to go away.
The steps are going to go, yeah, that door's going to get locked and put a window there, a window here, and then it'll have a nice front, front entry.
That's all I wanted to know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I'm very hesitant, uh, usually to grant any front setback relief, particularly when there's no need for it, it could be altered, but I think in this instance, to move it back six inches would not help the streetscape. I think it would be a detriment to the look. I, I do think that it's wonderful, the way that you're bringing the roof together, and that is a hard roof, if you try to do it the way you've got it. And the removal of the ramp is, is great, but of course, we can't tell you you need to do that, that's, the homeowner's right, if it's for purposes of dealing with the handicap issue in the home. So, uh, my only question, I guess the remains, is who drew this wonderful rendition?
Gary Ellis.
Who?
Right on the bottom. Ellis.
Can't read that.
Gary Ellis.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought.
Yeah.
Boy, he's in the wrong business, huh?
He's in the right business for me.
For you, yeah. Yeah, all right. Does anybody in our audience care to speak in favor of this petition or in opposition to this petition? If so, please come to the microphone, let's hear what you have to say. Seeing no one, we now close it to the public and put on the petition. We open it up to board discussions and deliberations if needed, and if anybody's prepared to make a motion.
I think it's going to make a nice change, I think it'll actually improve the look from the street, and whether or not he has to take the ramp out or not, I think would be an improvement, so that's okay, in my book.
Thank you very much.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Oh, please.
I'd be happy to make a motion to approve the request for a special permit, I believe, and it meets all the conditions required for a special permit.
I'll second it.
Actually should be a variance, it's a brand-new non.
Yeah, there's no nonconformity now, so.
I thought there was on the side.
There is on the side, but there isn't on the.
There's two fronts, aren't there?
Yeah.
Two fronts.
Yeah, you got one on Norma and one on, uh.
Twenty-six feet.
Oh.
Twenty-six feet on, um.
Now, if you were extending out into that 26 feet, that would be an extension of a nonconformity, but your front setback along Norma Ave is conforming, so you're creating a brand-new nonconformity, so that would require a variance.
Okay.
What? Always those details.
So amend your motion to say approval of a variance.
I amend my motion to approve a variance for this.
Mr. Martin, you second it?
My second, I agree with that.
All right, and, uh, sir, you understand before we proceed on a vote that you've asked for two forms of relief, we can only grant you the one, and we're going to require or ask you to agree that the other one can be withdrawn without prejudice, so we're pursuing this on, as a variance, and that's because you're seeking to create something that does not exist currently on the ground. So you'd, you'd want us to be, withdraw without prejudice your special permit request, wouldn't you?
Sure.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the petition as presented. Does the board care to have any discussion on that motion before proceeding? Well, I'm going to throw my two bits out there, saying that we have looked at these corner lots before and granted relief in the form of a special permit. That tonight we're doing it because we're creating a nonconformity, and I understand that that's an unfortunate thing, but it's, I, I think when you have a house fronting on two streets, it's just very, very difficult to come into compliance the whole way around the property, particularly on a lot this size. I think it would be a, a benefit to the town to see this remodel occur, and certainly no detriment.
I agree, and I think there's a hardship, and I think the hardship could be owing to the shape of the lot and the fact that you have to have two fronts to comply and set your house back, and it's very difficult to do that with a corner lot. So in this case, where he's looking for six inches to improve the property, which I think will be a benefit to the surrounding neighborhood, I think it would be proper to grant the relief for a variance.
Okay.
Especially since it's diminimus.
Started something.
All right. Good enough, that one.
No, it's fine. You know, it's kind of like the, the word I learned today, my mommy taught me to say it six times. All right, so let's move on from all this fun and frivolity. Does anybody care to have a, any further discussion on the motion so made and seconded? And hearing none, we'll do it by roll call. Barbara.
Um, we had a motion seconded?
Yeah.
Okay, aye.
And Sean.
Aye.
Jay. Sean.
Aye.
Jay. Dick?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well, there'll be a decision drafted, it will be filed with the town clerk's office, 20 days must elapse before that's considered final, and before you then be able to retake it, record it at the registry of deeds, so as to get a building permit. So no building until that's all done.
Sure, sure.
Now, we have a motion, uh, we need a motion for the withdrawal of the special permit.
Yeah, he's good with that. So I, I'll make a motion to withdraw the special permit.
All right.
Without prejudice.
Second?
Second.
I'll be able to apply for a permit, correct? Okay.
All right, so on that motion so made, I think we're probably safe to go by, by voice vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carries unanimously. That will be included in the decision. You don't have to do anything, we'll get it done for you.
Okay.
We know you want to build fast, so do the best we can.
It's been a while.
Well, you know.
There's a reason why.
When you want to build things that aren't in conformity, there's your problem.
No, my, my wife has been the one that's the driving force on it, and I said, trust me, we're going to have some hoops to jump through.
Yeah, you're fine, they weren't hard hoops.
Just got through one hoop.
We can make it a hard hoop if you want, but.
Did you know we've got to bring it to the diminu-?
You have to bring it to the town, okay.
But that's after, correct?
You have to, you can apply for the permit, but you cannot actually get the permit until the decision is recorded, so there's going to be a bit of time.
Yeah, 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 that's fine. No, I'm not.
And the decision's usually filed with our administrator within about a two-week period. Okay?
I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, you have a good night.
You as well.
Uh, petition four, 5044, Troy Thomas, concerning property located at 58 Rainbow Road, by process of elimination, I bet that's you.
Okay.
All right, well, good evening to you. This property that we're talking about at 58 Rainbow Road is in a R-25 zoning district. This evening, our applicant seeks a special permit pursuant to 104 point 3 point 2, subparagraph 2, and/or a variance under 203.5 of our zoning bylaws, for front setback relief to construct an addition in the front setback on a pre-existing nonconforming lot. I've never seen four of these in a row.
Two inches.
Why don't you tell us all about your petition, please?
Um, I am seeking a variance for a remodel project I have here on 58 Rainbow Road. Unlike the other, the others in front of me, I'm seeking for a little bit more than six inches. I believe, um, last I checked, it was 18 inches. So that's something that sets me differently from the others, but I am seeking, I believe, in speaking with Mr. Grills in the building department, that I'm, I'm seeking a variance as opposed to a special permit because I'm a nonconforming, pre-existing lot. So it is, again, a corner lot that has two frontages, so. Along the same lines as the last applicant.
How many corners are there on Berry Road and Rainbow Road? I've seen a lot of these corner lots on the street. That was a rhetorical question, it wasn't intended to get an answer.
One for three.
So let's go down to Mr. Martin's end. Mr. Martin, any questions about petition?
Uh, just, I guess, I'm still trying to figure out whether it's a variance or special permit, again, myself, but I guess if the building inspector says it's a variance, that work can work for me. I don't see any, it's a corner lot, again, you've got the same issues as we just had in the last one. We're only looking for a foot and a half from, from the one road, conforms on the other side to the street setback. It's done in keeping with the quasi-contemporary design of the house now, I think it's fine. I guess I would have no issue with it any more so than I have had with the other ones tonight.
All right, Mr. Frapery.
Aye, it's, uh, it's, um, looks like it's conforming on Rainbow Road, it's just on Berry Ave, I guess it's going to be, maybe it's a foot and three quarters. I would probably say it's a foot and three quarters based on the measurement we have here, so. So, um, I don't have a problem, again, it's one of those corner lots, 28 feet's, I think, fairly reasonable, given the other side is, is conforming, so I, I don't have a problem with it either.
All right, Ms. Igo.
Um, Troy, where do you park your cars? Do you park them right here?
Uh, so there's a, there's a separate detached, um, it was a garage, so it's basically a utility shed now, so they park the cars just in front of the utility shed now.
Okay. So you use that side of the lot for parking, is that?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to bring something to the board's attention. When the side lot setbacks are used for parking, we're allowed to reduce the frontage requirement on a corner lot to 25 feet.
Yeah.
So actually, if that's the reason that you're using it.
Well, it makes sense, the steps out of there.
Yeah. So in, in that case, uh, this could be granted by special permit? Well, to be honest with you, you could almost grant it by, yeah, by special permit, yes. You might be wrong.
One faster than the other, the variance as opposed to a special permit?
Did you ask for both forms of relief?
I didn't. I just went on just what Mr. Grills...
You can do a variance just as...
Either way, they both have to wait twenty days for everything to be...
No, no, there's alternative relief, at least on the notice.
Okay. I mean, my application's already in, so he was just, Mr. Grills was just trying to...
You're looking for either one, so it doesn't matter, yeah?
Asked for both a special permit and a variance.
Yeah.
I'm just pointing out, it's just a... It's just something that we have in the bylaw relative to the side setback. And that's on, where was that?
Would that be considered a side setback, though, or is that...
Well, if you use, if you need setback relief on a corner lot for frontage as a result of you needing it for parking in a side setback, you can reduce the frontage requirement, reduce the setback to twenty-five feet. And then when I find that, I'll tell you what page it's on.
Okay.
Actually, found that.
It's one of those notes.
Yeah, it's one of those notes, yeah. You know, these things, I gotta tell you.
Never knew that one.
Student of this bylaw.
Okay, well, he's looking. Mr. Mantoni, any questions?
No, I'd agree with the board.
Ms. Murphy?
No questions.
Well, I mean, I have a question. Why is it being preserved in this sort of a fashion? Is it a unique architectural style?
Well, it's obviously a home that's, I've been in the family for a long time and just keeps getting added on and added on. So as you can see in the descriptions or in the plans, we're just basically filling in the right side. The family's grown, so there, we're creating another bedroom as far as...
I love it.
So... Yeah.
I love it. It's really a unique, different design.
It's different. I've worked on it for a long, long time, so...
I looked at it and said Frank Lloyd Wright must have been up here.
It's like a fifty-sixties contemporaries.
Yeah, it's great. I really like it. So for me, I mean, once I hear Mr. Igo present us to that point. But, you know, I believe what Mr. Igo says in each instance, so if he's seen it, it's there.
All right, perfect.
Here it is. It's on page thirty-two. I think it's X.
It's X. That's what it is. Anyway, we can proceed on either one, but...
Did you have anything else, Sean?
No.
All right. And did I ask you, Ms. Murphy, if you wanted to chime in at all?
No, no comments.
Corner lots are considered to have two front yard setbacks and two side yard setbacks. Yeah, look at it. It's right there. You're absolutely right. Black and white. We learned something last meeting, too, about allowable home businesses. See, we're always evolving on this board, and I hope you respect that tremendously.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we have, I guess we're proceeding by way of special permit. Is that fair to say? In light of this? All right, I think that the criteria's certainly been met for a special permit. That is, that it creates no undue hazard nuisance or nor congestion by granting the request of relief, nor will it adversely affect the town's character or the neighborhood's character now or in the future. So with those findings, I guess we can, if the board cares to have any discussion further on it, if not, if somebody's prepared to make a motion.
Did we have to ask the public or did we?
Well, let me make this simple. There's not a soul in the house, and the stockings are all hung under the fireplace with grease, so... There is no public. There's no public to comment one way or the other.
We had no upset neighbors tonight with anything.
It's a good thing.
Absolutely.
So who wants to move to...
I'll move petition 504-4 to provide a special permit as requested. Grant a special permit as requested.
Second?
I'll second.
See, by doing those things called moving and making a second to the motion, they get their names in the special permit that's recorded. Good advertising. All right. Does the board care to have any discussion on this motion so made presented with a second? Hearing none. Ms. Murphy?
Aye.
Hello?
An aye?
Aye.
And how about you there, Mr. Mantoni?
Aye.
And Mr. Igo?
Aye.
Aye.
Frapri?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well. A decision will be drafted. It will be filed with the town clerk's office. With that point, you can come down, get the decision, bring it to the registry of deeds and record and provide proof that you've recorded back to our board administrator, understanding you wanna move as fast as you can on this. I will do the best I can to get the decision out, okay? Now, we have one other housekeeping thing.
Yes.
Don't run.
No worries.
We have a variance as requested by you. And so you want us to allow that to be withdrawn without prejudice, don't you?
Yes, sir.
I thought so. So on that, Mr. Igo moves.
Second.
Mr. Martin?
Yep.
All right. And I think we can resolve this by voice vote as well. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It carries unanimously. That will be noted in the decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a great night. And I think that allows us to move to adjourn, doesn't it?
Make the motion to adjourn.
I heard that.
Request for continuance?
Oh.
Oh, do we have a... Did they sign something?
Signed an extension agreement. They've done all that.
Okay, anybody prepared to make a motion to allow the continuance?
So moved.
Second.
Second on that motion moved by Mr. Igo and seconded by Mr. Frapri.
Do they need to sign any type of extension for this?
They did. They, yeah, they did it all ahead of time.
Oh, okay.
So on that, I think we could probably proceed by a voice vote as well. All those in favor of the request to continue the matter till the August 24 meeting, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
It carries unanimously. Now, we have a motion on the table by Mr. Frapri to adjourn, and I hear a second to that.
Second.
Okay, great. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now adjourned.